I call this work session of the Hillsborough School District 1J to order. Our first agenda item is some action items. I move that the Board of Directors decline to hear the Step 4 complaint filed by Justin Hayden.
Okay.
All right, was that Monique? Who was that?
Erica.
Erica, okay. It's been moved by me and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors decline to hear the Step 4 complaint filed by Justin Hayden. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you please call the roll?
Dan Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Patrick McGuire?
Aye.
Bunny Ward?
Aye.
Yvette Pantoha?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries. Second agenda item is to appoint our Equity Advisory Education Committee members. We had a discussion about this a couple of months ago. Francesca, is there anything you want to add before? Do you want to save it for discussion time, or I would like to handle it?
I have a brief presentation, and then after that, if there's any questions you have, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is a review of the Educational Equity Advisory Committee membership approval. First of all, good evening, everyone. Sorry, I didn't do that earlier. If we go to the next slide, which I have in the remote. Okay, there you go. I like saying the next, thank you. This is the process that we're going to see with the Educational Equity Advisory Committee. And as you know, and we did some extensive work this summer, Senate Bill 732 was passed. There is guidance from ODE. There is an OAR that is in alignment with it, as well as the Senate Bill 732. We, in August, it was confirmed, and then in September, you approved a list of people who were selected to be on the Educational Equity Board. What we've had since September is three vacancies. Two have, one is on, one person is now on leave, one person has left the district, and one has asked to, because of their school commitment as a student, that we move to find a replacement for the remainder of this school year. In the Section 3 of the Membership Participation, it states that the School District Board and School District Superintendent, in consultation with the Educational Equity Advisory Committee, shall fill the vacancies on the committee in the same manner as their original appointment. Currently, we have three open positions and following the same procedure as we did in August, we are moving forward to fill those vacancies. We went back and looked at a screening process of those that we had not selected. If you remember, we were only trying to fill, I believe at that time, 12, 13 positions, and we had close to 30 people apply, and they were all wonderful candidates. But we went with the ones who have the highest on the screening application. When we went back and looked, there were three standout candidates that have, are still interested in being a part of it. And so if we go to the next slide, it talks about Senate Bill and then the Oregon Administrative Rule, and how the main one is that the School District Superintendent is responsible for coordinating the member nomination process and proposing finalists to the School District Board. So we went through that whole process again, and I brought forward the names two superintendent members. And we're coming here today for the appointment of those members so that we can have them at the next January meeting, which is coming up on the 22nd of January. When we looked at, if you go to the next slide, when we looked at the vacant positions, we had one person of color who was leaving the proposed, was leaving the EEAC, and two white identifying members. And if you remember, part of what we have to do when we are selecting members, one of the main things is that we're matching based on the demographics. And so we really looked at trying to fill the positions with the representation of those who are leaving. We have two identifying white community members, as well as one person of color who we would like to move forward to fill those vacant positions from January 2024 until June 2024. Well, all of them are filling the spot of somebody who came on last year, and so their term was due to end this June anyway, so they would just finish their term that would end in June, and then if they wanted to, they could reapply for an additional two years. Next slide. These are the four members, and you should have received their applications in their packet, in your board packet that was sent last week. Next slide. And so with your board approval, they would be able to attend our next meeting, which is on January 22nd, and finish off the remainder of the term through May 20th, which goes until the June 1st. So I'm coming today to ask if there are any questions you have about the process, about the three candidates that I can answer. But mainly, it's about the process that we have put in place, which was going back to the original process of looking at a screening application, followed by the interview questions that we had inside their application, and then vetting it through the EEAC committee, which has all been done and shared with superintendent.
All right, so are there any questions for Francesca? We can probably take the presentation down. Thanks. Anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors appoint the Education Equity Advisory Committee members as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Pantoha that the Board of Directors appoint the Educational Equity Advisory Committee members as recommended by the superintendent. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say that I appreciate that we were able to go back, because we had a lot of candidates, and that was great to give people an opportunity, so thank you. I like that about this process.
Yeah, me too. I appreciate that, one, we have so many people willing to serve in district roles. It's great to have this many people interested in volunteering to help make our district better, and so thanks to these people for stepping up and for sort of sticking with it, you know, like, for being willing to step up and finish this term. I appreciate that, thank you. Rose, can you please call the roll?
Dan Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Patrick McGuire?
Aye.
Bunny Ward?
Opposed.
Beth Pantoha?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we've got a few discussion items. First up, just in talking with Travis and the administrative team and Vice Chair Pantoha to prepare for this meeting, I realized we'd been getting some emails and stuff, so at the next meeting, we should approve, or the intent is to approve the new calendar, and I wanted to give everybody a chance to make sure you're still on board, or ask any further follow-up questions. I guess I would add the context that it's unlikely that we would be contacted by people in support of the calendar change of moving to align with our districts and getting more class time before AP testing and whatnot. And I understand that, you know, six emails from staff and seven emails from parents is just a handful, but I would say in representation of the whole district, but it was also, it's also pretty substantial for us to hear about, to hear from that many people in the community about an issue, so I don't know if you, some are going to the full board, I can see that, but I don't know if you're hearing a lot more questions? I am. So just open up the opportunity for you guys to ask any more questions if you want about the calendar, or if we're all just fine approving it at the next meeting, we don't really need to take a lot of time here. Monique?
Yeah, I've been reading those emails as well, and I guess one of the things that stood out to me is, I'm wondering about, when the survey was done, when the survey was done, how clear was it to them that they were looking at some, at this change moving forward and not just for 2022, 2023 school year? I know that we postponed it for that year to give people a chance to adjust their schedules and so on, but it just seems like some of what I'm reading or hearing is that we thought this was just for this year and that we didn't want this. It's dead, out of sight, out of mind.
Anybody on staff want to address that, or?
To try to address that, I think when we were looking at that, we were noticing that other districts were also making the change and the move towards calendars that would have a pre-Labor Day start, which we have seen some have adopted that, some are moving in that direction, and so we were trying to think about those alignment components. We were also thinking about, really about our students and what was needed, especially as we came out of the pandemic, what were the things that we wanted to focus in on and be able to support our students. And so this decision to move forward in this direction was student-centered, and we also wanted to afford our students and families and staff and community a two-year look at that, so that they would have that glow in advance and know what that would be looking like for the next two years. So that was part of the decision, and that's why we came back in August and had a conversation again after we had decided last year not to have it, that we would be looking at that change for the calendar, because that's under the discretion of the Board's work. So had those conversations offered throughout the fall before we came forward with those proposals.
Yeah, and I understand that, but I'm wondering, when the, when the survey itself was done, was that clear to those who were taking the survey, or even to the families post-survey, that this was the case, that it was, that this is what we were looking to move to, was a pre-Labor Day start, and that we wouldn't do it the first year, but we were intending to implement it for '24, '25 and forward?
I don't think at the time when we were doing the survey that we were asking those direct questions. I think we were trying to get a feel if people were ready for that change, because that was something that we wanted to enact last year, and we're thinking that that was going to be a placeholder for us to be thinking about moving forward with that change as a part of the survey. If anyone else wants to add anything?
I'd say I think some of that came about after, after the discussions with the Board in the work sessions or other sessions about the results of the survey and looking that it was probably best to wait a year from those discussions. So I think part of that was more the push back of a year was due to discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick, you have a question?
Really just more of a discussion briefly to let, thanks, Mark. I, about a couple of months ago, when we first went over this and the benefits, I was pretty sure I'd end up supporting it, but after reading through all the constituent feedback, I'm a little less sure now, so I intend to take the next two weeks to reread all the feedback I've gotten and reread all the materials I have from past presentations by staff on the benefits and reasons, as well as going even back to the survey. Because I agree with what Mark said, that we're a community of over 100,000, and so, you know, 20 people contacting you may not at all be representative of what the majority viewpoint is, but at the same time, when you get unanimous negative feedback on a proposal from, you know, 15 emails and five to seven people you talk to in person who come up to you about it, I don't think you should quickly dismiss that, you should think a second time. And so I'm going to look over everything again and try and figure out where I am by our vote in a couple of weeks, but, you know, it's just, I want to be sure and be thoughtful about the folks who took the time to write in and share why they aren't sure it's such a good idea as we thought it was at first. But also, I'll just let everyone know that I'll be looking over everything in that time.
Other questions or comments? Yeah, for me, I would say it's not 100% one way or the other. I have heard people talk about supporting the calendar and aligning with other districts, and I would say that I do think, you know, that increased instructional time for AP testing and whatnot, and even state evaluation stuff is so valuable. And I also, and I put this in an email response to some other, some of the people, I think, when they emailed, the whole board, you may have seen it, you know, I've only been in HSD for 23 years, so I'm way many more years than that old. So in the, in the, this is the only, of the four states I've lived in, this is the only state that ever started after Labor Day. So I think you, you do get used to whatever you're, whatever becomes the norm, so every other place I've ever lived or dealt with school started before Labor Day. So when I got here, it was kind of a surprise to me. So it took me a little while getting used to the fact that we started after Labor Day, go, huh, really? Shouldn't we be starting before like everybody else? But I get, I guess, I understood it, that, you know, over my time here, that it's the HSD way, or it was the Oregon way, and now that's changing, to get more aligned with, you know, hoping that our, our students can be competitive with the rest of the students in the country when it comes to job opportunities and college positions and whatever. So, so I mean, I, I'm still of the mindset that, you know, the, the plan presented to us by our administrative team and our superintendent is a good plan. I hear the concerns of the, of the people who are, you know, change is scary and, and you don't know how it's going to work out, and I, and I think a lot of their concerns are valid, like, yeah, when I, having your vacation schedule around kids in school is tough, I get it. And, and, you know, summer will be a little bit shorter when you start before Labor Day. It'll feel a little bit shorter, and hopefully the benefit to our kids is worth that, in my opinion, so. I guess, I guess that, one of the reasons I want, and we're not voting on today, it's not approved today, but it's, it's on first reading, it's intended to be approved next meeting, so I guess if you, if you have concerns that come up between now and then, I'd like to get ahead of those before we get in the boardroom on the 20, whatever it would be. So, you know, if, if, if the intent, if there's enough of the board who want to reconsider this plan, you know, we can, we can take that up on, at Board Meeting Day, or we can try to address that before we get there, so. That, that was the only reason I wanted to put this briefly on the, on the agenda today, we just have a quick discussion of, you know, we're hearing from community members, and I guess if any community members watch this and support the idea of going to a pre-Labor Day start, please let us know, because most of the feedback we've received is people concerned about making that kind of change, so. Any other questions from board members or comments from staff, anybody, anything you want to add? Can't really see hands, but I think we're good.
I know at least Mark and Patrick, you have been reaching out for information in order to respond to different constituents in the community, and I just, I appreciate the collaboration between the Board and especially Beth and Connie, trying to find information so that we can publish that as people ask questions.
Is anyone else having trouble hearing the boardroom?
Yeah, or Travis got done.
Oh, he went away.
Yeah.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, got you now. Is there anything else you need to add, Travis? Or anyone else?
Nope, thank you.
And I would, I would say I appreciate the kindness of that characterization when I've been inundating you and the administrative team with questions regarding this subject. The fact that we've been asking a few questions is probably generous, and I appreciate that characterization, because, yeah, it's not something that I think we're taking lightly. I think it's a big change, and hopefully people in our community understand that we're taking it seriously as a board. All right, our next agenda item is a presentation, oh, excellent, regarding our strategic plan update, and just a heads up for everybody, we hope to do these on a pretty regular basis over the course of the year. Travis has indicated this is one of his priorities, to make sure that the Board is continually updated on how our, you know, daily lives and plans are intersecting with our strategic plan every step of the way, so. Who would like to kick us off? Is that you, Audrey?
That will be me, and then I'm going to hand it over to Gina.
Oh, thanks.
So like, he is really, we are really making great effort to just share information about some of the pieces of the strategic plan and data that supports the work that we're doing. And while first grade and kindergarten literacy isn't like highly called out, what is called out in our strategic plan is a third grade literacy goal, right? And so what we do know about that is, pre-k, first grade, kindergarten, second grade, all of those things are really important leading up to that third grade goal, and we have talked a little bit about the data, the assessments that we do, and if you'll dig back in the club labs, back to the retreat, we talked about some of the assessments that we give our students that provide us really important information regarding a student's instructional level around literacy. And I think what is really important to know, that we do these assessments, and we talk about, and we do them fall, winter, and spring with our students, and really, they provide us more literacy knowledge about our students than something like state testing provides. This really provides individual student, students, where they're at individually in their literacy skills. So these are the two assessments that we, two of the assessments we talked about, and we had fall data to just share with you. We did do this data a little while ago, we had planned to do this presentation a little bit earlier about some other things, but we wanted an opportunity to just share our fall data, and then we are coming up on our winter window to assess students in both of these assessments as well. But just to refresh your memory, the kindergarten EDCM, which is for field-based measurement, is administered to all of our kindergartners and new to HSD first graders. And really, what that looks at is phonological awareness and rapid naming skills and the correspondence between sounds and letters, so those are the things that that looks at. And then we have a phonics survey that is administered to all of our first grade students and any second through sixth grade students that rank from those grades up. And that assessment is connected to our curriculum, Wonders and Maravillas, and it is given again three times a year, and it is really specific to literacy skills in kind of the big five areas of reading. I am going to turn it over to Gina to just share where we are with our data and give some insight. We'll have questions. Good evening. Okay, the kindergarten EDCBM assessment, Audrey kind of touched on some things that it monitors, I just wanted to give you examples of what the assessment actually looks like. So we have the English on the left-hand side and the Spanish on the right-hand side, and with that, all of our students in kindergarten take the English, and the students who are English language learners identified as speakers of Spanish and all of our dual-language kindergartners also take the Spanish. So the English assessment is letter sounds, and that's where students have a piece of paper in front of them with a variety of letters written on the paper, and they have one minute just to identify as many as they, they know, and the teacher records it, and then the phoneme segmentation, just knowledge phoneme is a unit of sound. That could be one letter, like a T that makes a T sound, or it could be like a C H that makes a T sound. So the students, the teacher says a word, like the example there, shed, and the student would respond, shh, and sip. And so it's all auditory, because we're developing our oral language, so that's just an auditory test. So on the Spanish side of that, it's very similar, however, in Spanish, they're learning to read with syllable sounds, so they look at syllables versus individual letters and read as many syllables as they can, and then down below is the syllable segmentation. So the teacher says a whole word, and then the student also needs to segment the word into syllables. So my eyes are going, so I need to, and I don't read Spanish, but I could do that first one. I think it's modo, so they would do, say modo. Right. So, okay. So this is a snapshot of an actual kindergarten data in one of our classrooms this fall, and you'll see in the light blue is the English assessment pieces, and then the light green is the Spanish. So when we're looking at our individual students, teachers take a look at their class, and we're really looking to see if a student is at risk. So they are at risk in the fall if they were tested only in English, if two out of the two measures are in the red or in the 25th percentile. And then a student who was assessed in both English and Spanish, they would be at risk if three of the four measures were in the red. So you can see we've highlighted a few examples. That first one, there's two zeros, they're in the red, that student would be at risk. They could be assessed in English, they were in 25th percentile, so we would really make sure that we are honing in targeted instruction for that student to get them to increase their scores. The next one we have highlighted is the one that has the four measures, there's scores there, even though there is one measure that's in red, and they have all the English and Spanish, we're looking to see if there's three of the four measures. So that student technically is not at risk, however, as guiding our instruction, we would still look at the red and the yellow area and make sure we're targeting instruction down there. There's a couple more examples below, but generally speaking, you can just see that we're looking to see who is at risk and who is not in the fall. This also is our Senate Bill 1003, dyslexia screener, so this is where we really pay attention to the students at risk and make sure we're tracking them for guiding interventions. Okay, so for the fall, in our Kinder Data, you can see that we have 85% of our students are not at risk overall this school year in the fall. You can compare the last two years in the other graph with the red bars there, and you can see this year, we have a smaller percentage of students who are at risk. So that is a success for us this school year, and we have our series of what has contributed to that, and one of those could be that in our HSD preschool, we have nine of them. Last year, we spent a lot of time giving them professional development around early literacy skills. They are also using one of the same curriculum that we use in kindergarten first and second grade, integrity, phoneme, and awareness, so that could be paying off, and we were also able to provide more professional development for our kindergarten teachers back winter and spring, because our student situation got better, so we were able to provide during the day professional development that all teachers receive. I'd like to think that that helps improve our scores. Our phonics survey is the assessment that is tied to our curriculum, Wonders and Maravillas, and this is the assessment that first grade through sixth grade, so all of our first graders take this in the fall, winter, and spring. Again, so on the left-hand side, we have an English example, and you can see that there are four different tasks there. The, the whole assessment actually covers tasks one through 10, and those are skills from kindergarten to sixth grade. However, in the fall of first grade, typically, majority of our first grade students only get through task 2B, because they have not received instruction beyond 2B this point in the school year. So some students may progress beyond that, just because they may have stronger skills in other areas, but most just get through these four tasks, and those are letter names, consonants and vowels, letter sounds, consonants and vowels, reading, consonant vowel, consonant words, and you can see there that the ones listed there are nonsense words, so this really gives us an idea if students truly understand what letters make which sounds, and if they understand the short vowel rules, because all of these CDC words are short vowels, like ah, uh, and those, and it's in the list. And then the final task there is reading CDC words in text, and that's where students can use their, like, context clues, so if I get one word, I might be able to look at So if I get one word, I might be able to look at the next word. I know some of the rules around the sounds, but I also include in by some of the words around it to make an educated guess if I'm not 100% sure. So using their context clues to answer those, feel free to those words. And then on the Spanish side of it, they also are assessed on letter names and letter sounds. But then we also jump to syllables, like I mentioned earlier. Spanish reading is not taught in individualized sounds. They immediately are taught to read in syllables. And so we need to start assessing those sooner to make sure that they're learning how Spanish is taught for reading. All right, this is literacy data for first grade on those measures that I just was talking about. So we have compared last year's fall boards to this year's fall scores. And we are excited to see that all of the ones here on our English page are in green. So that means we have increased from last year to this year. Look at each of those. And you will notice that on task 2A, the vowel consonant and the consonant vowel consonant, while we did increase by about 10%, it's still lower than we would want to see. However, during this assessment, this happened in October, students were just receiving the instruction on this skill about the same time that they were doing the assessment. So they were being introduced to it, but they may not have it fully grasped yet. And then it goes forward as we read as well. And then for our Spanish measures, you can see that in all of our categories except for one, we have also increased from last year to this year. And I just want to note that that first measure, which is letter names consonants, that is an indicator for early literacy skills, but it's not critical for students to know letter names to be able to read. So one of the reasons that it may have gone down is because we're really focusing in on teaching the skills for actually reading letter sounds and syllables for our students. But again, it's something we'll pay close attention to because it is an early indicator of foundational skills and reading success. So we will continue to monitor and provide professional development for our teachers in that area as well. So the phonics survey, we use this assessment to find out where our students have strengths and where they have needs in the key phonics and decoding skills. So like I already mentioned, it covers kindergarten skills through sixth grade skills. And sixth grade, really, third through sixth grade, we're really honing in on multi-syllabic words. So more than one syllable, two syllable, maybe three syllable words. And also the introduction and continuation of instruction in prefixes and suffixes. At each grade level, they introduce different ones. So there's still learning occurring on foundational skills up through sixth grade. We assess all of our students, skill by skill. And we stop the assessment when a student appears frustrated. So in that, a student may become frustrated if they've already had several errors previously, or they might be showing signs of fatigue or struggling to answer. As assessors, teachers, and other staff members, we just say, okay, you know, that's okay. We will stop the assessment. We don't want to push a student to a point of complete frustration. We want this to guide our instruction. This helps find our instructional level, which guides the plain instruction of whole group and small group instruction and target the specific skills that students need, whether that's below grade level, on grade level, or above grade level. So speaking of being, moving toward being above grade level, I said earlier that most first graders in the fall stop the assessment around task 2B, whereas some students can continue based on the success that they're having answering and reading the question. So this is an example of three other measures that go past 2B. And with these, instruction in first grade doesn't occur until Unit 2, which is past October. So a lot of these students have not received instruction in these skills yet. But they may have received it in maybe a small group because teachers have known that they are maybe above level and they are continuing to target those skills. So if you look at those three, it tells you the percentage of meeting. But also underneath that, you can see that only about 40% of the total number of first graders got to that point in the assessment for that first measure. The next one, you can see it gets a little bit lower, about 36%, and then it's lower as they progress through more difficult skills. This assessment in particular, this measure, was consonant digraphs. And consonant digraphs are when you take two or more consonants that individually, say, you know, have different sounds, but you put them together and they make a new sound like T and H would make, that's what a consonant digraph is. And then the CDC C words are using a consonant digraph in words like wish or ship or that. So you can just see the progression of different student abilities. And same for Spanish. They move forward with doing open syllables in text, open closed syllables in a list of words, and then closed syllables in text. And you can see again that the amount of students that get this far in the assessment starts to decrease because they have not had instruction specifically in these areas. So knowing all of that information for our kindergartners and our first graders and second through sixth graders, it really, we have a lot of instructional support for our students. So we have a scope and sequence that's aligned in our core reading program aligned to the assessments that we give. We have intervention and supplemental curriculum, and those are listed there. And just a reminder that our Wonders in Maravilla curriculum that we adopted in 2020 was highly rated by our state and on the approved list. So when we're moving forward and looking at like science of reading and all the best practices for our students, we have a curriculum that does that. So we are able to invest a lot more into supplemental intervention materials. We have some that are aligned that come with our curriculum, like Tier 2 phonics intervention, a program called Wonder Works. Pre-K through 2, we use integrity phonemic awareness. We're starting this year to use another research-based program called UFLAG out of the University of Florida Literacy Institute. And that's really targeting our phonics skills instruction. And then we also have multiple Spanish interventions for our students to ensure that we are given equal opportunities. As Audrey mentioned, we do have upcoming assessments, actually starting yesterday. Our window opens through early February to assess skills. In the phonics survey, what's great is any skills that a student already mastered, we don't have to go back and assess those again. We can just continue on in the assessment to see where they kind of max out again to inform our instruction. And the instructional level changes as students are taught and reassessed throughout the year. And we also progress monitor our students to ensure that we are meeting their needs and adjusting our instruction so that they can proficient readers. And then just a note, the Early Literacy Success Grant that you approved in December supports all of our instructional support with curriculum, professional development, and coaching that are staffed. And just wanted to give you that update as to how we're supporting our third grade literacy goal. And again, these grade levels are important to support that goal. And we're happy to take any questions. I know Monique sent us a view as well that we were able to respond to, so thank you for those. But again, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer any.
You mentioned that the scores for a particular section, I think on the English one, they haven't covered that yet. And so that is, is there any conversation about moving the timing of the test so that it allows us to be tested?
Well, we do, so we test, yeah, fall because we want to get a baseline of where a student is at so we can really track their progress. And as we introduce putting skills in our instruction by the winter, we'll see if they have improved their scores based on the instruction they have received from fall to winter and winter to spring.
So there'll be another time to do that?
Yeah, yeah, fall, winter, and spring.
It also gives us information of where, like, we do have some students that even though they may not have received instructions, they have the skill. It's really helpful for us to know that because that allows our teachers to see that students that already have a skill and they can be moving forward to those. They're out of CDC words, they can keep going to the CDCC words and doing that in fall. So we also sometimes have students that need to only take the first two parts too. And it really depends on the, it depends on the banners, like that we're going to have. And go, go on something where they're not going to use that. We're trying to find the, there's a sweet spot of instruction.
Yeah, I noticed, and then in the Spanish one, the ones that did go past, those are really high.
They were, I know.
Yeah.
Do you think, sorry, do you think that's like, just follow up on that? Do you think, so that they haven't received instruction on that, maybe you said small groups or something? But how much of that do you think is contributed to, you know, reading at home and whatnot? Like parental involvement at such a young age, it feels like that might be a big factor too, no?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yes, I don't have any questions. I had sent all of my questions to you guys, and I really appreciate the responses. It would be nice, maybe in the future, just a suggestion of putting those numbers of the total number of students that you have in the cohort, that would be great. But I really appreciate the presentation and the information that you provided. It was very insightful and helpful in understanding how this program is working. So thank you.
Patrick?
Yeah, I'd also just like to say thank you for this material and for presenting it tonight. I, sometimes when I see folks in the community and I'm wearing my little button that says, I must go remember, ask me anything you want to. People know that I, this is one of our strategic goals I care the most about and that I've, so they ask me how things are going. And so it's great to have this information to be able to share with them because I have such trust and appreciation in our, our professional educators that they're working very hard to, to help our students. But it's really nice to know some of the details so I can more confidently share that with the community. So thank you for overseeing this project and thank you for getting us details as well so that we, we can track some of how things are going in the early grades so that we know what to expect when we are looking at third grade rates as well. So just a thank you, and this is great, great information. And a couple of months ago, we had another presentation on early literacy that was really helpful. So putting together the assessment component with the sort of structured supports component that you previously talked about, I think gives, gives a good full picture of what we're doing.
I didn't even know there was a button. That's a good button. I like that button. I might have to find, find one of those on Amazon. Other questions?
I just want to thank our team. Gina is our Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. And obviously, our schools and our tutors, our coaches, our teachers in school just really do a great job. And I think the great thing that has come from this adoption of Wonders in Maravilla is really some consistent use of curriculum as well as assessments that are used throughout our district. One of the questions Monique happened to ask was how many kindergartners did we assess? And we assessed 1,173 kindergartners. We currently have 1,216 kindergartners, which means over 97% of our students we've assessed. There's a variety of reasons why a small little handful were not assessed. But I think what's great is that we're now having this really good consistent data connected to our curriculum around assessment. And it's just really a shout out to our elementary schools and our leadership around this work that is in the world of spelling for their literacy goals. So really excited about this work too. So just a huge shout out to all of them.
And sort of related to Erica's question earlier and your point that if they've shown proficiency, so the, when you start again this week or whatever, they basically sort of pick up where they left off with fresh eyes, fresh ears, fresh learning, not so much frustration or whatever. And then just continue that into the spring assessment too, right?
Yes, exactly.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, thank you, guys. This was a really great presentation. Appreciate that. Appreciate all the work that went into it. Thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is something I sort of asked and talked to Travis and whatnot about putting on. In a couple of hot newses a few weeks ago, our communications team shared links to some Budget Matters information on our webpage. And it was just so insightful to me, the work, I guess, probably Michelle's team and Beth's team did together to put this together, that as, as we head into session and, oh, I need to work on our conversation with legislators. As we work, I think we are hopefully going to see with attention from the governor, attention from parents, the situation that happened in nearby districts. Maybe, you know, and now in the short session to address the way we budget for schools in Oregon in this short legislative session. But you know, the fact that most of us join the board hoping to influence things that turn out to be, or just make decisions on things that turn out to be at the legislative level. And advocacy is our best way to do that. And I feel like being an informed board member and understanding the budgeting process in Oregon, how we got to where we are, and how things have changed over the last three decades is sort of important. And when I saw this material on Hot News, I thought it would be great for us to go through it as a board and have the team describe to us the details of the slide. So, sorry, that's enough of me. That's the purpose of why we're doing this. Beth and Michelle, what was to kick us off here?
Yeah, so I'll be happy to take you through all this. And then if there are questions that stump me, I will phone a friend and ask Michelle to help out. But for those of you online, just so you know, I went ahead and printed out the six-page hard copy of the Budget Reference Materials Packet that's currently posted on our website under the Budget Matters area, like Mark said. I also printed out some of the reference numbers from my Excel spreadsheet where I created all these wonderful graphs and whatnot. So I'm sorry that those of you who are online don't have that in front of you. The material is copied and pasted into some of these slides, slides that we're going to go through. But I can also send you a PDF so that you can see them more clearly. I mean, you'd have to zoom in quite a bit to be able to read them on these slides because it's a lot of information. But I wanted to be able to go through step by step and explain what it is that you're seeing in each of these graphs and within the narrative content and how I got the source data for the information and then what it's telling us. Okay? So we'll go through, oh, I have to click her. Here I am waiting for, what am I pointing at?
And when some of us have the opportunity to meet with legislators on the 24th of June, will we be able to have this as a leave behind for them to take maybe? Or something similar?
Yeah, I mean, I'm ready now in the form that it's in. And if you need it in a different format for that legislative thing, then you just let me know and I'll get that ready for you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, okay, let me see. Trying to figure out how to work this. Pointing at, pointing over there? You can do it for me. Perfect, okay, sorry. So basically, I kind of already framed this up for us, what we are hoping to get out of it. So let's go ahead and advance to the next slide. All right, so the first three things we see in this Budget Reference Materials Packet are graphs that are basically different ways of slicing and dicing some of our district information. And first off, we start with a breakdown of staffing. And what this graph does is it takes our total number of staff members and breaks it down by type. And what this graph does is it takes our total number of staff members and breaks it down by type. So licensed, classified, and we went ahead and broke down our administrative staff into a school-based administration and district-level administration because I think that is important. A lot of times when people might be kind of focusing on, oh, you're administrator-heavy, you know, they don't necessarily feel like the principal that leads their school is extraneous. It's more that notion of you've got a lot of people sitting around doing nothing at your central office. So I just thought it was important to kind of effectively categorize those into, who are those administrators who are working at our schools and running our schools every single day versus those of us who kind of operate at a little bit higher level and help oversee operations at the district office? So that is that breakdown. And you'll see that 95.1% of our staff members are licensed or classified. So that's your classroom teachers, counselors, education assistants, bus drivers, nutrition service workers, and the like. So that's a way to look at our staffing. And then the next two slides are different ways of looking at our general fund budget. And one is a mechanism that Michelle and her team puts in the budget document that kind of looks at our whole general fund. And if you divide that by our number of students, you know, in what categories do those expenditures fall? And you'll see that the top expenditure category is instruction, which is great, which is as it should be. However, in those major categories of spending, at least this is my estimation, is that, you know, 96% of those categories have a direct impact on students, whether that be their transportation, whether that be supplies and materials needed to conduct school every day. So that's, you know, that's, like I said, that's one way of looking at it, a point of interest. The other one, the expenditures by object summary, is just a way to kind of, and what I'm highlighting there is the fact that education is a people-intensive business, especially the way we operate it. Obviously, it's a little bit different with our one online school, it was our online academy where education is primarily delivered virtually. However, in our other 36 schools, education is delivered in person. And so that takes human beings, that takes a whole system of various types of human beings to make that happen every day. And so, you know, more than 80% of our budget is people. It's the cost associated with people, paying them salaries, paying them benefits. And then another point of interest, because this has come up over the years, people have made different attempts at reforming our PERS, Public Employee Retirement System, because that is a pretty big fixed cost for a lot of districts. And what makes that an interesting and difficult beast to put one's arms around is that in Oregon, there are 196 or 197 school districts, and they pretty much all have a different PERS employer rate. And the reason for that is because it is such a big expense that districts, some districts have taken the route of bonding that debt, basically taking out a loan and trying to get some better rates than what might be available kind of as the statewide rate to try to reduce their costs on how much that's impacting them. And so you see, you know, the PERS rates from district to district varying greatly. For us, in this school year, we're estimating PERS rates alone that we can't do anything about. We are required to pay them. That's $32 million out of a general fund budget of $220-ish million. That's a big line item. So it's just something to keep in mind. And just in our efforts to be transparent about how we spend our money, I think that's, you know, an important piece of information. So I kind of summarized what these graphs are showing us and some major takeaways. And I've already kind of highlighted those for you. But to the extent which those are useful talking points for you, I wanted you to have them. And just a way to help you better understand why these have been included in this packet. I can pause there because I know I tend to talk a lot and really fast and don't often see if people have questions. So if there's any questions on this part, let me know or we can move on to the state-level budget allocations to K-12.
Any questions on the first part, folks? I guess one question I have was sort of the planned reserves at 5.19. We've talked about reserves in the past and that seems higher than what we have generally talked about. Is it just a 2324 anomaly because of SFR funds or whatever? Or is this just a more different picture? Are we talking about two different things when we talk about our reserve?
Now, reserve includes some assigned, some assigned items already, like our employee insurance pool. So that's why that number is a little bit larger than our normal 4% target. So it's not filled out there specifically. So thank you for that question. And again, the source document for these two expenditure slides is our 2324 adopted budget. So going to that document would provide more of the details around what Michelle was talking about too.
So this gives, as we talk to legislators and we talk to community members about how we spend the money allocated to us by the state, this gives you a pretty good way to describe it, I think. So. Hopefully this comes in handy when you're wearing your button, Patrick.
Okay, well, now the next two slides that we're going to go over are probably the most exciting to me because I feel like they really give us a good sense of what's been happening in the state of Oregon over the last 20 years as it relates to the funding for K-12 education. And I know that this is a very dense graph. There's a lot of information being shared here. So I will do my best to go through and explain not only what it's showing us, but why I have structured it the way that it's structured. So.
And I would say this is one of the ones, I was hoping for more explanation on these. So awesome.
Oh, good, good, good. And also, you know, just for reference, I'm showing where did this data come from? It's straight from the Oregon State Legislative Fiscal Office. Every year or every biennium, I should say, they produce documentation that is on their website. And usually what's the easiest thing to go to is that biennium budget highlights because within the first few pages, they give a nice pie graph that shows the legislatively adopted budget in two ways. One is for the general and lottery fund, which I have pictured here. And the second is for the total fund budget. So the total fund budget includes their money that they get from the federal government, includes money from various taxing sources that may not be reflected in what they consider the general fund or general and lottery fund. Now historically, K-12 education has been 100% or at least in the high 90s percent funded from the general and lottery fund of the state of Oregon. So if you go back in the wayback machine, all the way to like the '03, '05, '05, '07, even the '07, '09 biennia, you'll see that whatever the K-12, whatever the state school fund allocation was for that biennium, it was 100% coming from this budget, the general fund and lottery fund budget. As those biennia moved along, what you see is increasing amounts over time, they're getting a little bit of what they end up allocating to the state school fund. It's like majority is still coming from the general fund, but maybe there's a portion, 300 million, maybe it's 400 million, coming from other state funding sources. So it gets a little bit, I feel like it gets a little bit hard to put your arms around if we were to take and say, oh, well, because in recent biennia, we've been getting a little bit of the state school fund from the total fund budget, maybe we look at it as a percentage of the total fund budget. The reality is the majority of it comes from the general fund. And I feel like it's useful to still look at what K-12 is getting as a percentage of the general and lottery fund budget. But just keeping in mind, so for example, you'll see this biennia, 2023, '25, here it only says 9.457 billion. And you're saying, well, that doesn't make sense because K-12 education got 10.2 billion. The reason is this amount is what came from the general and lottery fund budget. We got the rest from the all-funds budget, which is what you'll see in the next slide. But I just, that's the context I want to give you here. So when you're looking back and you're remembering in your mind, I remember in this biennia, K-12 got this amount of money. Why isn't it say that? And it's because some of the money that the state school fund got in whatever biennia probably came from the all-funds budget. Okay? Just wanted to ground us in that. We can get that?
So I don't see the pie chart on the website. It's just here.
No, this is just for your slide that I created for you, that would be in your board.
Yeah, I have that, yeah. But yes, and so the graph part on the upper left, the red line is the indication of the percent of general fund and lottery fund budget allocations over the course of the last 20 years. Is that right? That's what the red line represents. So the grayish-blue line that finishes at 33.492, that's overall state revenue. And the percentage allocated to education through general fund and lottery is the red line.
That is right. And to answer a question that came through from Monique, why does this say 33.492? And on the next slide, you'll see it says 33.491 is because I wanted to use the exact numbers that were on this pie chart that I've added here, which is from the Legislative Fiscal Office, right, from their budget summaries, their highlight documents that I talked about. And if you put in exactly what they have on this pie chart in an Excel spreadsheet and add it up, it does add up to 3.492. So it's rounding when you're using huge numbers at some point. And I didn't know from which one I should subtract a .001, so I left it. That's the reason. That's the reason why you'll see that slight discrepancy from this slide to the next slide.
That's fair.
The other thing that I want to show you is the other budget areas and how those have been funded over time. What you have here in this slide that you don't have in your PDF document that's on the website is the source information. So down here in this table, you can see exactly what allocations other areas of the budget are getting. The major categories that are funded by the state's general and lottery fund are public safety, human services, other education, which sometimes people like to lump it all together with K-12. They say, well, education has gotten X amount. And when they're saying those bigger numbers, they're including like higher education and things like that. But that doesn't have an impact to K-12's operating funds. We don't get money that gets allocated to the public college and university system, for example. So this should help give you kind of a backstory for the different aspects of the graph that are shown here.
So is it sort of fair to say that the pie chart that we have on our screen now, that's not on the website that you added for our context, is sort of an expanded blown-up view of the final column on the graph on the left?
That is exactly right. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Erica has a question, so we're gonna see what her question.
So you said on the red line of the graph over to the left hand in the earlier years, like '03 to '09-ish, that it was 100% coming from the lottery fund and general fund budget?
Yes.
And as opposed to like now it's gone down, we get less. But was it fully funded? I mean, because it still shows different, that little bar at the bottom still shows different funding sources? So was that like extra on top of being fully funded? So like, I like seeing like this part right here, if these three years or these.
Well, we're, I think maybe it's, okay, this is great. This is great that you're pointing this out because I think what you're looking at and thinking that those different colored bars represent is, oh, that's K-12 education. No, K-12 education is one colored bar within the stacked bar. The other colors are other budget allocations. So for example.
Human services, public safety, yeah.
Yes. The total state general and lottery fund budget in '03, '05 biennia was only 10.955 billion statewide. And that was the breakdown of how it was spent. 4.905 billion was given to K-12 education. That's when we got 44, almost, you know, pretty close to half of the state's budget went to K-12 education back in '03, '05. The other areas, public safety, health, you know, natural resources administration, got the rest of the money. So fast forward up to 2023, '25, and the state has 33 and a half billion dollars to spend. Education got 9.457 billion of it, right? So that's why it's only at 28 and a quarter percent. That's the percentage we represent of their total allocation. And my point in showing this isn't to say, oh, I want to start a fight between K-12 education and human services or public safety because I'm not saying those things aren't important. I think it's helpful to see how priorities have shifted over time and how certain areas have grown in, you know, the amount and percentage of the state's amount of revenue that's being allocated to them. It's simply a matter of prioritization, right? And that's the spirit within which it's given. It's not, I certainly don't mean it to, like I said, start any kind of fights or, you know, anything like that. However, I think it's interesting, it's just interesting to see the choices that we've made over time. And, you know, there are choices to be made in the future around what do we value most in terms of where we invest our money and where do we think that's going to have the best payout, right? Those are our points of advocacy. At least, you know, with more information, we can at least come at it from a standpoint of, you know, this is the data, right?
And I think that goes to, this is exactly what I wanted to point out is that where we spend our money is where our priorities lie as a state. So if we always say education is important, but it isn't getting the amount of money that we say it's important, then that's the result that we're going to get, is what we get. The other thing, just notice on the graph and how people tend to say, or we hear from legislators, well, we gave you more money this year than we did last year. But every time it's more money, but every time we have inflation and we have rising costs. So it's not keeping, even though it's the one last year, it doesn't mean it's more of that pie of the amount that we.
Right, the raw number, the summation number may be bigger than the year before, but you're not buying nearly the same things that you bought with it that year.
Right. And also, if you look at the exponential growth of the state's general and lottery fund budget, I mean, that's really growing at quite a rate there, so.
I mean, and to your point, I don't, there's no reason, nobody, no categories on this pie chart want to fight with each other. And so I appreciate you saying that. And I would suggest that when you set your children up for success over the course of a lifetime, maybe we wouldn't have to spend as much on human services and public safety. A suggestion.
I'd say we're paying now for the reason why we did not invest in education. Now we are paying for health and human services.
It's playing the long game. And playing the long game is not always an easy. It's still the swallow for like, it's still for the shorter term, so often.
Right. And seeing the actual human crisis is like happening at the moment.
Yeah.
I understand the need to want to have that reaction to help address those issues now, but not looking at the root cause of how we got here.
Yeah, a question. Eric, when you were talking about this line versus the categories that we're... We're open to feedback too about how to teach this graph because we want to share this with community members. So to me, this blue bar at the bottom grows, but it's directly connected to the red line here, which is the diminishing percent of the big pie. That, that, we need, would it be better to separate this red line? Is this one confusing or is it, if we can, if we can show that the, the blue bars are connected to the red line, that that makes sense? And that it's important to show the same graph? Like, what is, what's your input as?
Yeah, I, I want to look at it a little bit more and kind of digest on it. But I do, I do want it to be that any one of our parents could look at this and they understand what's been happening. So that when we're advocating for funding, it's easy to understand why or how we got here. And even to our legislators, because I think some of them don't really understand this either.
Yeah, I think you're right. Like, I think, uh, Eric and I have been immersed in this for the last seven years. And when I looked at the graph on our website, I thought I understood what it meant, but it's only through this discussion that I realized, yeah, I was pretty, I was pretty close. But it, and I, I don't know that if you would have shown me this graph seven years ago before I was fortunate enough to be elected and immersed in this for so long, that I would have just intuitively understood. And even, even after seven years of immersion, I thought I had it right, but I wanted to make sure somebody said that that's what it was, right?
Yeah. No, I, I welcome this opportunity to explain it more and get feedback because I don't want people to look at it and get the wrong idea or not understand it.
And the narrative on the website helps, right? That is the, it is the narrative in conjunction with the graph that makes it. And the narrative, I think, on the website that you have does help point you in the right direction.
Right.
It's the, yeah, the narrative needs to go hand-in-hand with the graph, I think. And what the narrative has on the website that we don't have here. And I like the, I like the expanding the column out on the pie chart and realizing that that just, that's the pie chart for one year or one biennium. And each budget cycle, whatever, different looking pie chart. If we had, you know, an infinite number of pages included every pie chart for the last 20 years too.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, you could just even see the gray area exponentially growing and growing until...
Yeah.
Where we are.
Yeah. By changing the pie chart into a bar graph, you can actually see year to year that a client has a rich number.
And ours have remained more stagnant.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, after the declines of the '08 recession, it's just a pretty linear increase, right?
Yeah. So this, um, I, I foreshadowed this a little bit. So basically, um, this now takes into account, so the previous one was trying to just have a lot of fidelity to exactly what came from the general and lottery funds as it relates to K-12 education. This one takes, okay, what are the total state school fund allocations? It still looks at it as a percentage of general and lottery funds, right? With the slight exception of the .001 that's a little different from this slide to the next. But, um, it's, it's like, okay, well, let's say this. You know, the previous slide looked only at what came from general and lottery funds. Okay, this one's going to look at exactly what the state's school fund allocations have been for the last 20 years. And it's also going to be like, okay, there's a state's school fund allocation that we know. For example, this year, 10.2 billion, right, for the state for '03, for '23-'25. We also know that because a few years back, the legislature passed the Student Success Act, the corporate activities tax, which generates money, um, half of which goes to us in the form of the student investment account. Um, some of that comes to us in the form of Measure 98 funding. And now, in this biennium, starting in January, we will be, um, getting $90 million or, sorry, not us getting $90 million, but K-12 statewide has access to non-competitive grants for early literacy of $90 million. So it's like, okay, let's capture those amounts as well. So, um, again, in your kind of source graph second page here, it's a little easier to see than on the screen. But, um, this one is the K-12 share of education state budget. That's the second one on that page, right? And so you can see, starting in 2017, 2019 biennium, was the first year we got Measure 98 money, right? So, okay, let's add that to the state's school fund allocation and just give legislators credit for these other things that they're doing to try to supplement money for K-12 education, right? So starting in 1719, we get, we get Measure 98, High School Success. The next year, we get Measure 98 and the very first little baby allocation of the student investment account. And then the next biennium, we get a more kind of fully funded situation for both Measure 98 and student investment account. And then this biennium, we have all three. Measure 98, student investment account, and early literacy grant, right? So if you take all those things into consideration, we go $10.2 billion state school fund, but with these other sources of funding that are being made available to us, we're up to $11.702 billion. Great. That's amazing. Well, that is still almost $2 billion short of what the Quality Education Commission says would be needed to have an effective education system. Now, I understand that the Quality Education Model, the Quality Education Commission, that has been in operation for the last 20 years, um, at various times has been derided as unrealistic. There's no way we'll ever get that much money, et cetera, et cetera, which may or may not be true. However, its whole purpose is to define an ideal state for education. So it must have some usefulness. It, it does delineate, okay, you know, this is the number of counselors that would be needed. This is the number of teachers. This is, you know, kind of the target class sizes that, that seem to be most appropriate and research-based. So, I mean, there has to be some value in that, right? And at least it gives us a model to evaluate ourselves again. So I have included, um, for all of the biennium noted here, what the Quality Education Commission has said for each of those biennium, it would have taken as an allocation for K-12 education to be effective. So you can see that trend over time. Um, you can see our trend over time for total allocation. Um, and then you can see the proportion of the state's budget that that represents. And even if you add these things in for sources of funding that don't even come from the general and lottery fund, it is still a drastically reduced percentage over time that is being spent on K-12 education. So that is what is being shown in this particular graph. And, um, hopefully, within my explanation, I kind of added in a point of why I feel like it's important. It's an important thing to be aware of and an important story to tell. But again, I, um, I welcome questions, comments, feedback on, is this useful, is it not useful? You know, I feel like giving legislators credit for these extra sources of funding is important because that can get easily lost in the conversations, especially when we're only focusing on, you know, we got 10.2 billion. And then they're saying, but we gave you more money, you know? And so, okay, yes, we're capturing those monetary sources here. Um, the only thing that I did not include that is kind of a specific opportunity for, for education in the state are seismic retrofit grants and capital bond matching grants. Why I didn't include those is because they are not available to every district across the state, certainly not in an equitable manner. And it's not money that can be used for operations. And my thought process was, you know, it's not just education that has access to some of these things that are like that. You know, I'm sure in health and human services or public safety, they have things like this that would be available to them and not other folks. But, you know what I mean? So it's like, at some point, you need to just kind of focus on what can really impact operations on an equitable basis across the state. And that is why I have focused on state school fund, Measure 98, student investment account, and early literacy. So now you know my thought process.
Wait, I think it's good that, I, I understand, like, we're, again, very grateful that they're recapturing money that was already supposed, should get to education. But at the same time, now we have to jump through all these hoops to get it, which I think is ridiculous. Um, but at the, on the other side too, is explaining to them. So we're meeting with them, with our local legislators to try to explain this to them as well. And as many of us know, we don't have lobbyists. So our board members are lobbyists. And I know you're saying, you know, you don't want to pick a fight, but I think we do. I do. Like, I, I think that that's the other thing. It's like, at what point do we say, you know, like, how many more years does that gray get bigger or get smaller?
So I'm distracted just to make sure I understand before I start telling people what I think it means. Um, the top four in the bottom left, uh, the orange-gray or yellow-gray, orange-blue, the thicker lines, those represent the portions of the bar graph. And then the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 at the bottom represent the lines being drawn. That's right, right?
That is right.
Okay. So, um, looking at the K, second from the bottom, K-12 fund, only percentage of state budget, uh, the blue line at the very bottom of the graph, um, they come in at, uh, the, the, so, no, it's QEM. But the percentage of 30.5% is different than the 28-point something or whatever on the previous slide. So there's, there's got to be something being captured in the, what do you say, general fund budget that's not general school state fund and lottery grants or whatever? Is there a tiny 2% or something?
So, um, yeah, I, I totally understand why this is, this is confusing. So, so, yeah, it's, so the blue line, which is represented by the number, by the percentage numbers in red that goes down to 30.5%.
Right, 30.5%. On the previous slide, it was 28-point something.
Right. Right. So the reason it goes up to 30.5 is because we're taking account of the 10.2 billion. In the previous one, we only took account of the 9.457 that came directly from that budget, right? It got to 10.2 with other funds, but we're now, we're looking at it as a percentage of the general and lottery fund budget. I get why that's confusing, but it's kind of a way to try to keep apples. And then the, the line right above it that shows 34.9% is when we take 10.2 and add in the Measure 98, SIA, and early literacy. So then we're saying, okay, you're giving us 11.7. You thought you were only giving us 10.2? You're giving us 11.7. Even at 11.7, it's only 34.9% of the general and lottery fund budget. And we used to get 44, right? So that's what that line is showing you.
And, and when we say the, the 11.7 number, uh, state school fund, Measure 98, SIA, all combined together, uh, when, when we talk about 10.2 and then the SIA was supposed to be $1 billion per year, 2 billion per biennium, looks like it's only a billion. 11, well, 1.5. Is that right? We go from 10.2 to 11.7?
Yeah. And those were numbers that, to be fair and honest, those are numbers that I received from COSA. So, um, what I struggled with in, in researching all of this was they don't, um, just call out these things in nice neat little packages in the budget documents, and they're very hard to find. So, um, I'm kind of relying on some, some colleagues that hopefully have the correct numbers. Um...
Because it's hard to just look at it and get it right? I appreciate you taking the time to do it.
Yeah, for sure. So, yeah, the notation from COSA was, uh, in '23-'25, for SIA is 1.087. And I think, you know, part of maybe the confusion is they're like, where is, does Measure 98, you add it to it, then it's part of what the... It gets, it gets difficult, so.
Yeah, but I think this one, uh, can I chime in too, Mark?
Sure.
You and I have talked about this a little bit. I think the importance of this graph and the conversation when we're informing legislators or community members would be first part, which we talked about earlier. Hey, we did 10.2, that's what y'all asked for. Well, that was related to some perception of current services. But just to make what we did last year happen this year, we needed 10.2.
Yes, not to make it better, right? Not to make any improvements or target improvements that the SIA account would like.
Right. So then the Dream with 98 was let's focus on high school students graduating and having career pathways, easy win with voters, we add money. Uh, SIA, let's do equity-based things, diverse learning opportunities for kids, uh, easy sell to the business community, so let's do the corporate activities test. Latest rounds, let's talk about early literacy, easy sell, let's add money. So the current narrative is, we gave you 10.2, that was solid. Plus, we gave you all this on top. Why are you still crying? And what I thought was, the first time I'd ever seen this bar graph stack like this is when Beth put this together and showed us quantitatively. How much does that extra on top of 10.2 stack up to? And what's now the discrepancy between QEM and that stack? And then how does that tweak the declining allocation from the state general fund? And even in the most like conservative estimates, if you were assuming the 98, SIA, and early literacy all stacked cleanly on top of each other and aren't redundant, we're still showing that level of discrepancy. So I felt like this is a very helpful one. You have at least 10 minutes. That you could sit with a community member or a legislator and say, this is, this is why we're grateful and still continue to be dissatisfied that we have the amount of money we need to do right by kids.
Yeah, and this graph is amazing. Uh, and yes, it's the first time I've seen it represented like this. Again, after seven years of being immersed, I appreciate you taking the time to create this because it's crystallizing a lot of the thoughts I've had. And even the brown line, whatever, the total, 34.9% of the full state budget is the lowest it's ever been, right? Like, at least in the past 20 years. Like, I can't say for the year 2000, based on this graph, but I know it was higher. Uh, but even at 34.9%, even at the combined total of all of it, gets you to 34.9%, we're investing the least amount we have in the last three, two decades with, and our students.
And, and honestly, that was the thing that I was hoping would be helpful with all of this. It's just, especially as we saw kind of what Portland Public was going through and then with, with Salem, you know? And everybody's saying, well, it's not sufficient, it's not sufficient. And then people are like, but we don't understand why, you know? And I, I just am not sure that there was a whole lot of breaking down for folks. And it's so confusing anyway. I think it's easy for people to just get stuck in the confusion and not really know, well, who's telling the truth? And we just want to try as best as possible to be as transparent and forthcoming and, um, you know, put the info together in a way that's understandable and helpful.
Well, and I think a lot of people are going by raw numbers and just like, oh, well, it's, that's more money now. So like, that means our district has grown. Like, everybody who's lived here for a long time knows we've grown a lot. So just more money doesn't mean that it's an adequate amount. To contextualize it to our own district and looking back at the first slide, where 80% of our budget goes to salary and benefits and purse debt, 80%. And then we have to negotiate increases. That's like a recipe for disaster. Like, how, how, how do we do that? And that's why you have the situation like Portland and Salem, where they are right now, they're between a rock and a hard place.
And I think a couple of things that... And I think a couple of things that I really love about this graph too is, um, well, one, don't dis- don't discount the impact of the pandemic again, right? Like, again, the impact of the pandemic is lingering with us. I'm I'm home because I'm not in the boardroom with you because I had COVID over the weekend, right? So, I mean, it's still here. And you could see, you know, the the goals of measure ninety eight cat tax, the nineteen twenty one, you know, it brought funding levels up to overall, even though the general fund went down, brought us back up to the oh nine range, right? The it did increase. And then, you know, pandemic hit, everything is out the window. And it so one, uh, you know, I don't want to discount the the fact that what lawmakers passed and intended, but it also shows exactly what we've been saying for the past four or five years or three years at least, is that we're using SIA, measure ninety eight money to fill in the holes of the general fund. The brown line goes up to forty point one percent in twenty nineteen at the expense of the general fund line. That's the the only reason we got, or there was an increase in the percentage of the state budget in nineteen twenty one was because we were taking money from a different place. And then everything, as the revenue still increased and the impacts of the pandemic exacerbated existing socioeconomic problems, more money had to go into human services and education got to the shorter end of that stick. At least that's what this graph says.
Say that. Mark, I feel like you and I have been talking a lot, but also because we're the longest board members that have been on here for almost, you know, seven years now. And it's, and it's, I'm not, I'm not losing that fact that we are the ones that it took us seven years to understand how confusing this is. And I think that it's on purpose so that everybody's like, why is it like this? And
Yeah, Monique, Patrick, if that like, your head's probably exploding.
Yeah, well, I mean, if like everybody else, yeah, it's like, if you're confused, if the unions are confused, the districts are confused, the budget offices are confused, and it's really hard to have unity to fight this issue if we're all confused on it. And I feel like the number, the first step is having the same knowledge base and vocabulary uh, for us to be able to talk about this in a way that everybody understands what is happening. So then we can advocate together.
And and I don't think it's a partisan issue too. I mean, I think you even heard, uh, the minority party saying, we're not spending enough of the state budget on education in the last biennium, in the in the last legislative, long legislative session when they were doing the budget. It was it. And it was weird to hear the majority party saying, oh, no, we're, it was. And the majority party got the cat tax passed. I get it. But it was very, it was a very frustrating most recent legislative session. I guess I'm glad I didn't work in it.
Well, I know that was a little bit over time. Um, the remainder of the presentation should be pretty straightforward. It's really just, if you want to advance, it's just kind of the breakdown of, you know, here are some examples of ways that we're physically responsible and transparent. And then from there, it really is just a reiteration of a breakdown of the numbers. Numbers of staff we have in different categories and then, you know, how we, how we spend our money. And then on the next slide, it's kind of what we call our classic equivalencies. What does it take to change the staffing ratio by one? What are our costs for a day in school? And and one single staff member in the licensed category or the classified category? Those are things that really can be helpful as we, um, try to cough out different things for our budgeting process and for bargaining. As, um, our union partners say, well, what if we did this? Or what if we did that? That allows us to more quickly calculate things and see what the impact would be. So for a document that's kind of intended for multiple purposes, you know, as we go into bargaining, as we go into budgeting, as we go into legislative sessions and have conversations, uh, this is trying to be a lot of things to a lot of people. So, um, that's why that's in there. Uh, and then the final slide is just a real, um, oh, sorry, some reinvestment things that indicate our goals, some strategic plans, silver twenty thirty five plan, um, board priorities and things. And then the final one just goes over kind of our bonding. And, um, we're going to have additional information about that, which Michelle and I will help present on the twenty third with the part three of the bonds and levies series with some additional information about, um, how this comes into play, how this fits into our overall, um, fiscal picture and how we attempt to be good stewards of stewards of our taxpayers.
I I apologize to our colleagues for me and Erica taking all the air out of the room, but, uh, it light bulbs, I think, were going off over our heads that have been uh, not illuminated for a long time and we're very grateful. Um, so any other questions or finer points anybody else would like to make? We'll shut up for a little bit. Monique?
Yeah, I'm swimming a little bit, but I I it was great to, um, have Beth explain all of that because as I went through this presentation and looked at all the details and trying to put this together, it makes a whole lot more sense to me, um, now, uh, understanding how that's worked over time. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
And and Beth, to the, to your point earlier, I don't, sorry, Monique, we done? I don't want to cut you off. Um, uh, I don't think there's a perfect graph or picture that tells a story without the narrative. I think, uh, and that it's complex issues have complex problems. I I I get that. I'm, I appreciate that NASA didn't put a person in a cannon and shot him at the moon because that seemed like what we do. They use calculus. Sometimes complicated problems have complicated solutions. And I, this is, it's not easy to just understand. And I didn't understand it just as a parent in the district before I was elected in ways that I do now. So I don't even, uh, these, this set of documents with conversations with us, with people who understand them can help, I think, people wrap their heads around it. Patrick, yeah?
Yeah, thank you for that information. It, um, I had a lot of this bookmarked on different O D E and legislative revenue office, uh, webpages. And so it's nice to have some of the most salient all put together nicely to share with folks. I will say, I think it's interesting. I think that, um, the quality education commission does a huge service. I think they've acknowledged in their, some of their recent reports that, um, their models, there are aspects to their charge that could be updated by the legislature, especially in looking at differentiated responsibility between urban rural districts, districts that have um, more low income students and students with experiencing accessing special education. But in general, I think the Q U E C does a really nice job, uh, of telling us what, uh, from an objective, independent lens, what would be necessary to to reach, uh, I think ninety percent on proficiency measures is the target that they look at when they set their number. I did think it was interesting reading the the most recent biennial, uh, quality education report, um, that I think in our district, like a lot of districts, we have, um, class sizes that are maybe a little larger than parents would like. And I think that I remember last year in talking with Mike, I haven't had a chance to talk about it specifically with Travis, but I remember that he said sometimes he wasn't sure that class sizes were the most important measure. There are a lot of different ways to help students and I appreciate that. Um, but I do notice that the quality education commission actually moved their benchmark when they're establishing the funding levels that are needed for elementary from twenty three down to twenty, uh, for what, for their ideal elementary school class size. Um, so that was interesting that obviously they're, you know, using their expert judgment, but they're just one voice. But I do think that was important because in their report, it also says that sixty two percent of teachers in a recent survey across the state feel that class sizes are not reasonably, uh, sufficient to allow them to meet the needs and to give them the time to meet the needs of each student. So I guess reading that or when I read that report, I have it in my notes here. I looked over them because we were talking about the Q E M and one of these slides that, um, you know, I I still do think there's evidence that, um, you know, class sizes are worth investing in and keeping that on the front burner too. So I know, I know, I hear that from a lot of parents and constituents. So just wanted to share that that interesting part from the Q E M.
Yeah, and that's, uh, just to re- join in that chorus, Patrick. Yes, I've heard from more than one teacher that, yes, uh, lowering class sizes should be an important thing that we work towards, but sometimes it is not a panacea. It is not the one thing that can make a difference. Sometimes it's adding, uh, qualified education. Another qualified adult in the room might make more difference in some cases. So, uh, giving teachers and staff the flexibility to choose the right knob to turn or dial, button to press to make things improve, improvements in classrooms. Yeah, that's important. The, uh, this was kind of an indulgence of mine. I'm a state budget nerd and I hope you all got something out of it. Uh, I wanted, I wanted to be able to talk about these documents on our webpage to the community in an effective way and to our legislature in an effective way. And and I knew that I couldn't do that lots of maxumulation, so explanation. And I thought everybody could benefit from it. So hopefully you all found this productive use of your time. Um, any, any other questions or final thoughts? We all good? I think Beth, Michelle, you all good? Can't see heads nodding the tiny strip at the top of the screen. All right, um, I cannot see who's in the room. Uh, I think we're, that's the completion of our agenda. We're at board time, I think, right? Do we have any students with us tonight? I can't see the room.
Yes, they're here. They're all here.
They're all here. All right. Uh, they could choose who would like to go first? And is there anything you would like to add tonight?
I don't really think I have anything I'd sign, but I am working on our on start times and how that, I think you guys, like, when people mad and so on, so anyone has anything that they could share with me later? Like, any thoughts off the record, on the record, I do welcome that because I, my deadline is not till I say May, so I have time.
Uh, yeah, it's like, I don't have much of days. Thank you, I'll be, thank you, Beth. Uh, these materials have been very insightful and great learning experiences. Yeah, I finished all my college applications. So hopefully I can give back to college. Thank you.
Um, so like, I've been seeing, I don't like, last year, um, uh, fell out with the fact that a wedding concert was a big success. Uh, you guys, I was very happy and I'm glad. Absolutely, Mike. Um, I don't know. But I also would like to say I agree that I thank Patrick for what he was thinking about for class size. That's very similar to my transparent, uh, and he pretty much brought it in. And especially like a lot of this stuff with these, um, materials was really interesting. To actually see that, um, what really goes on behind like the back, the real background and everything. And the fact that taken, you guys, seven years, thanks to like, attempt to comprehend, something is not even comprehensible. And, uh, that shows that we as a nation have a lot to work on. And it's surprising to me and such young age. But, um, thank you guys. I think I miss you guys.
You too. Did you also have a birthday in December?
Yeah.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, I got my life.
Yay.
All right, Travis, you have anything you want to add tonight?
Thank you, but appreciated the time taken tonight to learn more about our early literacy efforts than Gina and Audrey is telling us about how we're going to research strategic plan goals. We won't get there magically. And hopefully when we start to see those goals move, they'll know all the work that went in in the earliest grades to get students to that level. So thank you. And then Beth and Michelle, thank you for the budget talk. I got really excited. My heart rate was up hearing about numbers. I think it's super important that you all, Mark, I appreciate your ask and everybody else's attention too, to being able to understand those graphs and talk about them in the community because we're all ambassadors for public education. We all believe in the importance of public education. And until we can inform folks about those details, it's going to be hard for us to pull off a significant change in the state. Um, and support the governor and legislators in their effort to reform funding in education. So thank you for the time invested in that conversation as well and all the legwork and creativity that it took. We've been shopping around this budget document to other districts and leaders in the state, and we found a lot of support for it. We we hope that everybody sees that our numbers are clear, uh, to understand also accurate. So that when it comes to bonds and levies and bargaining and budgeting, that we have transparency and H S D and that other districts can look at us as an example of how to do that in our community. So thank you.
All right, um, maybe start online. Uh, Patrick, do you have anything you want to add tonight?
Uh, not too much. Wonderful presentations. I enjoyed looking at the, um, in one of the recent, uh, newsletters. Uh, there was, uh, the Butternut Elementary, the map that was repainted and, uh, uh, the map of the United States. And as I was just thinking about the fact how education has many levels, because for the elementary school students there, that's just, um, you know, from when they're going around their playground, they can see a little bit of geography, but it reminded me of, um, there's a a famous math problem in graph theory and topology about whether you can color any map with just four colors. And it was proposed in the eighteen hundreds and didn't get solved until the nineteen seventies that that proved that you can, no matter what the map is, color with four colors where no adjacent regions have matching colors. But anyway, it just makes me think of, uh, how nice it is to be a part of the education system and then celebrate the joy of learning. And I see that there is some, uh, potential ice and snow in the forecast. So Travis may have to wake up pretty early to make sure the roads are are clear for students. So until next time, see you.
I'll call you, Patrick.
Four thirty or whatever, four o'clock? What's the call time?
Four thirty.
Four thirty. Monique, anything to add tonight?
No, I, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Sheen, anything you would like to add tonight?
Just want to say really appreciate the presentations today. Um, and happy new year, everyone. Thanks.
Erica, anything you would like to add tonight?
Um, I I also just want to say thank you for the presentation. And I think we as a district have like been learning together how to share this information in a way that is is, um, easier to understand, um, to someone who hasn't been there long. And we don't forget that also our legislators have a turnover time. And sometimes you get people that are there for two years and then they leave and you got to clean it all over again to the new person. A challenge as well is trying to keep the momentum of advocating for stable and adequate funding every time we have turnover in representation. Um, but I think I just want to add like to your point, Mark, like we didn't even get to talk about, you know, I think we always talk about class sizes, but it's not the one thing that could that, you know, there's also a lot of research around extracurricular activities and, you know, we have, what if we had all of our kids participate and we didn't charge them? But we can't because we don't have the money. So like, there's all these programs and things that are very enriching and that there's a lot of studies also around what makes kids want to come to school. But we don't have the money to explore or finance those kinds of things. So definitely have a lot of, a bigger fish to fry for us, uh, um, board members. And next year, I'm hoping is a really transformative year and manifesting that for, uh, public education, um, that we're able to make some really big changes or at least, at least people can open their eyes and shift the perspective of addressing the root issue instead of putting a bandage and continuing to throw money that direction. So thank you all for presenting on this.
And Beth, anything you would like to add tonight?
Thank you for this explanation on the budget. When I first saw it, I was like, what is this? Because I have a prime example of someone, like, if you would ask me a year ago and just saw that number of like ten point two billion, I'd have been like, you guys have the money. But now I have a better understanding. And as someone who now wants to be on the legislative committee and, you know, have built those relationships, I have to have the information and I really do appreciate this. you know, have built those relationships, I have to have the information and I really do appreciate this. And I will have a lot of questions for you then, as I pay more attention to it now that I have a sort of better understanding when you explained it. So thank you for that. And happy new year, everyone, and happy election year. I'm kidding.
Right. Leap year election year. An extra day to ponder that. Uh, thanks, everybody, tonight. Yes, for the presentations. Uh, great to see how we're addressing, that we're assessing early literacy and how we're getting our students to third grade reading level. I know we talked about that as a benchmark of success and, um, it's Erica's point. I think we heard the number before. It's in the eighties, right? Of, uh, students more likely to graduate if they're involved in extracurricular activity. Yeah, yes. Class size isn't, is a problem or a thing we should address, uh, but it's not the only problem. And it's not, it, it was great to see a little bit of, um, positive news lately about the Chicas program that we have in Washington County and that Hillsborough is involved in and, um, so it's great. It, it's a great example of, uh, extracurricular activity that gets people involved. Um, and yes, thanks for all the, thanks for all the budget information. I look forward to talking with our legislators in a few weeks about that, right after our next board meeting, I think. Um, and yes, happy, happy twenty twenty four to everyone. And, uh, I'm looking forward, so in my new house, finally, I have a permanent address. I'm a Hillsborough resident for the first time in my life, which I kind of love. Um, but forever I will remember that most of my twenty three years in the H S D were spent not in the city of Hillsborough. So just a reminder that H S D is much bigger than the city of Hillsborough. Um, and I gue- I guess I brought up, uh, the new rural caucus at OSBA and I think it's not necessarily district by district. I think it's board members. So if you, if you feel like you have enough perspective or are interested in having a voice in that group, I think it's board member by board member. You decide if you want to petition to, to join. So I, I think I may, I think we have enough rural schools in our district that we should, uh, have somebody, somebody look into that. Um, and, uh, I'm frankly excited to test negative and finally have chicken tacos with my wife and my mom. So, um, I'm going to go on the other side of the house and do that. Thanks, everybody, tonight. Uh, we are adjourned. Have a good night.